We are going to call this meeting into session and we will bring forth Pastor Jonathan Green from Mount Zion AME Church to render our invocation. Will we all please stand?
Let us pray. Eternal Father, we come now to simply tell you thank you. Thank you for blessing us to gather today, to do the work of missions and to do the work of ministry. Now, Lord, it is our prayer that you would go with all of our council persons, that you would go with the mayor, that you would go with the county and city administrators, that you would go with law enforcement, that you would go with those who do the work of building up this community. Father in God, we've come now not for form or fashion, but we've come to invite and to invoke your presence in this place, that every thought, every decision that is made, that is made to the glory of God. Now, Lord, we thank you for bringing us here today, oh Lord. And Father, we ask of God that our coming will not be in vain, that you would do that which you have called us to do and that you have commissioned us to do, for all of the work is divine. For these and all of the blessings, we ask in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Now we will do our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To all, we would say good afternoon. Today, we would like to pause for a moment of silence, one for the central Texas flood and all of the 200 and, I mean, I'm sorry, 129 who've lost their lives. Over 170 people are still missing there in Texas. Also, our neighbor Darlington County, we would pause for Deputy Sheriff Devin Mason, who was shot and killed while responding to a call. Please have this moment of silence with me. Counsel, we have before you approval of minutes. What say you?
Some move.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposes? The ayes have it. We now have honors and recognition, service recognition for Donald Huggins, 15 years in the fire department.
That's it. All right. Donald Huggins joined the Bronx Fire Department in 2010 and has served a dedication and professional for the past 15 years. During the course of his career, he has been assigned to several stations in Nebraska, including Agent 111, 151, the Road Level 14. He was promoted by a firefighter driver in 2013, and he advanced to the rank of captain in August of 2022. He currently serves at Station 1 on Tometta Street at Captain on Agent 111. Captain Huggins has long for state leadership, strong work ethic, and passion for serving the community. He takes pride in providing comfort and assistance to citizens during their most challenging moments and values the togetherness and teamwork within his department. His commitment to the next 15 years makes him a respected member of the Bronx Fire Department. Join me in congratulating Captain Huggins for 15 years.
No, I'll let you all have it.
Next, we will have special, oh, excuse me, counsel, if you don't mind, the resolution, I'm sorry, let's go to the resolution number 2025-22. It's a resolution to recognize someone. Could we move that up to right after our special recognition?
Some move.
Okay, thank you so much. Next, we will have Mindy Taylor from Duke Energy to present preparedness and storm resilience, resiliency grant to the City of Florence.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. And Mayor, we have shortened this grant cycle. We're calling it our hero grant cycle. It's helping emergency response organization. That flows off the tongue a whole lot easier for me anyway. But this is the fourth year that we have this particular grant cycle, and the purpose is to partner with emergency response organizations to purchase lifesaving equipment, provide training, or innovative technology. And as I said, this is the fourth year that we've done this program, and I'm pleased to announce that this will be the fourth year in a row that we presented a grant to the City of Florence. And so this year, they applied for a $14,000 grant for a vehicle repeater system. So we're pleased to announce that grant today and hope that Chief and everybody else at the fire department will come up and we can take a picture.
All right. I guess you all are going to come together to holler. Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you so much, Mindy. We are always excited to see you, especially when you bring a check. So thank you so much to Duke Energy. Did anyone want to say before we move on? Okay. Next, we will have our resolution that we will move up. And this resolution is number 2025-22, the resolution to recognize, recognition for Rashawn Perry for being named the 2025 National Assistant Principal of the Year. This is sponsored by Councilman Smith. So Councilman Smith, would you, I think Amanda's going to read it, and then Councilman Smith?
Yes. Whereas Rashawn Perry, former Assistant Principal of West Florence High School and now Principal of Moore Middle School and Florence One Schools, has been named the 2025 National Secondary Assistant Principal of the Year by the National Association of Secondary School Principals. And whereas Mr. Perry demonstrated transformative leadership at West Florence High School by spearheading the expansion of the STEM Magnet Program, and whereas he founded and led impactful initiatives such as the Shining Nights Program, recognizing student excellence across academics, arts, athletics, leadership, and service, wellness weekends, promoting mental and physical well-being for students and staff, and the Sharper Nights Mentoring Program, offering critical guidance and support to young men. And whereas Mr. Perry champion innovation by leading the school's transition from a traditional bell schedule to one designed to enhance student engagement and relationship building, while also launching the West Cares Initiative to empower students in addressing safety and mental health concerns. And whereas his visionary leadership, collaborative spirit, and unwavering commitment to the holistic development of students have earned the admiration of colleagues, school administrators, and national education leaders alike. And whereas this prestigious national honor recognizes not only Mr. Perry's exceptional contributions to the field of education, but also the strength and vitality of the Florence One School System and the broader Florence community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Florence, South Carolina hereby congratulates and recognizes Rashawn Perry for his extraordinary accomplishments and national recognition as the 2025 National Secondary Assistant Principal of the Year. Resolve this 14th day of July 2025.
First, I want to apologize for not being in a suit. I literally just left registration and came here to do this. But thank you to the City Council for recognizing me. I keep getting recognized for things. I just do my job and do what I think is best for students and teachers. So thank you. And for everyone who has children in Florence One or have children that are going to be coming through Florence One, know that we are doing all that we can to ensure that we are providing the highest quality education and really creating a brighter future for Florence. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we will have appearances before before council. Counsel, we will have Ms. Pam Osborne to speak to council regarding issues and concerns created by police shortage.
Thank you for letting me talk today. And thank you, Mr. Davis, for giving me the opportunity and council members.
So Ms. Osborne, I have to say this before for everybody, and I left it out. Over here is a clock and it's already started. So we'll start that back over. We give everybody five minutes. So I just wanted to let you know that. Please forgive me for interrupting.
I'm sorry. Thank y'all for letting me talk today and Mr. Davis for letting me come and council members. I'm a resident of Florence and we have some concerns and I think you all are probably already heard it, but just from residents' view, I want to talk about the fewer officers on patrol can lead to increased crime rates and criminals may feel emboldened to, less likely to be apprehended. Unstaffing can significantly increase police response times to emergencies, potentially leading to more severe consequences for victims and heightened sense of vulnerability in the community. Short-staffed departments may need to be prioritized, responding to cause over proactive measures such as the community engagement and crime prevention incentives potentially allowing crimes to fester. Decreased community engagement, police shortage may lead to departments reducing community engagement programs potentially damaging police community relations and hindering effects to build trust and cooperation. Understaffing can force departments to eliminate or reduce specialized units such as traffic units and detective units, potentially impacting the quality and effectiveness of certain investigations and services. Our overworked and burned-out officers, existing officers, may increase workloads, mandatory overtime, and higher stress levels potentially leading to burnouts, fatigue, and decreased performance. Negative precipitation, longer responses time, reduced police presence, and limitations in services can negatively impact public precipitation of the police and erode trust in their ability to ensure safety and maintain order. Residents may feel less safe in the communities if they perceive a lack of adequate police presence and responsiveness. Increased crime, businesses may experience higher rates of theft, vandalism, and other crime due to the reduced police presence and slower response time. Some businesses, especially in areas with higher crime rates, may be forced to close and relocate due to safety concerns and to perceive inadequacy of police presence. And one of my questions is, there are a lot of police officers retiring early, or they're going to other departments. And there are already so many negative responses to the police, and I hate to see the negativity. I know for a fact, if the officers get the backing and understanding they need, it gives the incentive they need to work harder. When they put these uniforms on, they never know what the shift might bring. I pray for them every day. I understand because my son, my dad, my brother, and my nephews were all police officers. Thank you for giving me this time, and y'all pray for these officers because they need all of our prayers, and God bless you all.
Thank you so much. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to answer your question. I'm going to call up Chief Hyler to answer that question.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for allowing me to come up here and address this. I share, obviously, and we've spoken on this on a number of occasions, the same concerns that Ms. Osborne has. Right now, we are 14 officers, the positions that we can fill, out of 95. But that doesn't tell the entire story. The whole story behind that is, we also have four officers that are in training, so they're not on the street. We have four officers that are on family medical leave who are not on the street. So those things put a strain on us. This is not something that's solely situated here in Florence. This is something that's happening nationally. In fact, a PD Criminal Intelligence Council meeting that I chair, we had on Thursday. There were two agencies that cover significantly larger area than what we cover, who are in much greater need than we are. In fact, if you saw an interview probably two weeks ago by the chief of Myrtle Beach, they are 47 police officers down. In comparison to us, that's, we're a little bit smaller percentage than Myrtle Beach. So this is a national thing that is occurring right now. As you know, Mayor and council, you have approved us to increase our technology, and by doing so, we've been able to add cameras, flock cameras, tag reading cameras that have really performed unbelievably in solving crime. Our new drone program, of which we'll be purchasing two more of the autonomous drones, and we will be able to put one on the south side and the west side of town and be able to cover most of the city. Those are lessening the need for officers' response to different types of calls, for minor calls of service. But we are doing, we're working with HR and how we recruit in our retention efforts. We're wrapping PD RTA buses with fire and police information to try to recruit. We're looking at more billboards. Certainly, we're on social media on a regular basis promoting. But again, this is, this is a national crisis that's taking place in law enforcement, and you can Google that national crisis and it will show you that this is occurring everywhere in our country. The economy of the, you know, the job market is good right now, and even in years past, when the job market is good, that's when we can't, we have trouble recruiting law enforcement. So there are multiple things working against us right now, but we are doing everything we can to recruit officers and retain them. When you talk about the stress level on officers on the street, we have made sure, the captain over patrol has made sure that these officers are getting their, their days off, that the vast majority of overtime is voluntary. So we're working diligently and ensuring that they have the time off that they need.
Thank you. Councilman Trebay.
First, thank you so much for coming forward. We appreciate it. All of us share your same concerns, as Chief Hyler said. I mean, this is
There's a shortage everywhere.
Yes, ma'am. And it's something that Mayor has initiated a plan on crime and has been working with our city manager and chief and with staff to try to promote and put in place incentives to help officers, recruit officers, and also, thank you for that. I just wanted to say that. But also, Chief Hyler, if you don't mind my piggybacking on, I know we're looking to add additional flock cameras. You mentioned about the drones, but are we in a position to add those additional flock cameras? Will those be coming?
We have, we have signed the contract to purchase those, yes.
How many additional flock cameras have we?
There'd actually be, well, we were seeking 30, but since we're such a good customer, they threw in six more. So we're, we're getting 36. We'll have 66 cameras in the city.
And have we identified where those 36 cameras are going to be going already?
We are looking at that right now. Yeah, some of the strategic areas where we knew that we had pockets are definitely going there. And we're looking at the areas that we believe will be the most significant benefit to us.
So just for the benefit of the people at home who are watching, you know, we're not sitting back and waiting. As this shortage is ongoing, we're actively doing things to try to address these issues and identify the areas and be of help. That's, that's what I understand you're saying.
Well, yeah, absolutely, Councilman. And in the absence of personnel, I think the best thing that we can do right now is invest in technology. And you folks have certainly stepped forward in aiding us in our ability to increase. In fact, we're one of the only departments probably around this state that's actively moving up with this autonomous drone program more so than any other, as well as our real-time crime center.
Well, thank you to you and to all the officers, in fact, all our first responders. It's a thankless job, but I think on behalf of all the council, we want to say thank you for this thankless job.
No, I thank you all.
Well, just stay there for a minute. Make sure nobody else. Councilman Nee Smith-Jackson.
How many vacancies do we have right now that can't be fixed?
Fourteen.
I know we
Fourteen.
So fourteen is
Fourteen, fourteen, yeah, we have 14 empty positions, or 14 open positions right now.
Okay. Because I know you said 14 out of 95, and I was wondering, what? It's 95.
Ninety, 95 total police
How many officers do we have?
Total number of officers, yeah.
And with more of these flock cameras, they are reducing time for personnel, right? For police officers?
Oh, significantly, yes, absolutely, yeah.
So they definitely help them with our personnel in the meantime?
Yes, ma'am.
Good.
And, and, thank you. And that's, so thank you so much for coming. That is, that was one of our concerns. So I just want to tell you, Florence is not a place to create crime, to commit crime. If you notice, when these crimes are occurring, an hour to a few, within a day, we know the perpetrator and we're looking for them. And so even though we are shorthanded, the cameras actually multiply what we are missing. So we're not missing because, missing as much as you think, because we've got, the cameras give, can add up to several ayes. When cops have two, the camera has countless ayes around the city, and we're on top of it. Our, and also addressing our new real-time crime scene, NCIS Center, we are now looking into how we can bring some of the younger people and training them in the center so that then maybe they could find a love for this, because the love for policing is, has dropped a little bit, but we're hoping that we can rev that up some. So thank you so much, because it is our concern as well.
That's a fact, that the people like the interaction and the, at least I'll show them in person, you know, they, they love the interaction.
And we're going to continue to pray that we will get them. We're going to fight and do everything that we can to hire. So thank you so much. Thank y'all. City manager wanted to say something.
Madam Mayor, just, I just wanted to also note that we do have a $1,500 sign-on bonus, as well as a $500 finder's fee for employees. And I think the chief is also working with HR on a retention bonus as well.
We're working. Thank you so much.
Everybody apply.
Yeah, please apply. Thank you. Thank you. Please, please, please apply. Next, we have ordinance and position, Bill number 2025-23, second reading, an ordinance to amend the business license ordinance of the City of Florence, South Carolina, to update the documentation that may be required for the city as a part of the initial registration and annual renewal of business license and other matters thereto. What say you?
Some move. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposes? The ayes have it. Next, we have Bill number 2025-24, second reading. It's a series ordinance providing for the insurance of and sale of not exceeding $15,100,000 hospitality fee revenue bonds of the City of Florence, South Carolina, to designate Series 2025 and other matters relating thereto. What say you?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposes? The ayes have it. Next, we have introduction of ordinance, Bill number 2025-25. It's a first reading, an ordinance to update Appendix B of the city's current business license ordinance as required by section 6-1-400 to 6-1-420 of the South Carolina Code of Law. What say you? I'm, I'm sorry. We need to hear from Glenn.
Well, first, a motion.
A motion?
Second.
Okay, Glenn.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council. This ordinance proposes the update for Appendix B for the city's business license class schedule. This is all in accordance with Acts 176 of 2020. 176, as we all know, is the South Carolina Business License Tax Standardization Act. Per this act, state law mandates that municipalities adopt the updated standardized business class schedule by December 31st of every odd numbered year to remain in compliance. The class schedule is based on IRS profitability data and the latest North American Industry Classification System. That's, those are the NAICS codes. If you've ever done a business tax return or anything like that, you've got a six-digit code that you have to put in there, and that's your NAICS code, and that's how all businesses are classified throughout the country. The class schedule is something that's standardized by the Municipal Association of South Carolina. Failure to adopt this would result in the city being out of compliance with state law and potentially create legal or administrative issues going forward. The new schedule will take effect for the license year beginning May 1st, 2026. I wanted to emphasize, this is not actually changing any of the actual rates. All this is changing is where those individual NAICS codes fall within our rate class schedule. So if you were a NAICS code starting with 11, that's for agricultural purposes, previous years it may have fallen under the rate class of four, now it may go up to three or down to five. So this is just something Municipal Association compiles every odd year to ship those rate classes.
That's it? Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposes? The ayes have it. Next, we have Bill number 2025-26, first reading, and this is a lot, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 2024-14 entitled, "A Series Ordinance Making Provision for the Items, for the Terms and Conditions of the Issues of Combined Waterworks and Sewage System Capital Improvement Revenue Bonds of the City of Florence, South Carolina." In one or more series, it is aggregated, aggregate principal amount of not exceeding $270 million as authorized by the bond ordinance of the City of Florence, South Carolina, adopted October 24, 1985, as amended, 89, I'm sorry, 89, as amended, authorizing the assurance of the bond anticipated notes and other matters related thereto, to add additional improvements to the city's waterworks and sewer system to pay from the exceed, the proceeds of bonds authorized therein, and other matters related. relating thereto.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify, oh, discussion. Short.
Sorry you had to read all of that. Essentially, this ordinance is just expanding the definition of the projects that were in the original ordinance as passed. The original ordinance included expansion of the surface water treatment plant, addressing the PFAS contamination, and upgrades Jeffrey Creek Sewer Interceptor. This ordinance is, like I said, expanding that definition of projects to also include sewer system maintenance in East Florence, improvements to the Timminsville Florence Interceptor, and other general system maintenance needs.
Councilman Jabiel.
Mr. City Manager, if you would, can you tell us what specific projects we're talking about that are going to be included in this now?
Sure.
Specifically, the money we're putting towards current problems?
One of the major projects that we looked at, as you know, when we started this, we're looking to increase our surface water plant from ten million gallons a day to twenty million gallons a day. And that cost was well over three hundred thousand, almost four hundred thousand dollars. We've now gone to-
Three hundred thousand?
Three, excuse me, million. I wish three hundred thousand.
I think we could do it for three hundred thousand.
I believe we could.
So moved.
We're now looking to increase our surface water from ten million gallons to fifteen million gallons a day. In addition to that, we will be using other funds, around two hundred million dollars there, eighty million of which will go to water quality. We also have projects, as Glenn talked about, is Timminsville Project. That project is a long overdue project, about fourteen years behind schedule there. We have to work on Timminsville. We have a major sewer that's running in Jeffrey's Creek that's often have issues, particularly when we have high water events there. So we will have to move that line out as well. And then we have a lot of general maintenance on our water and sewer system, particularly as we grow in our East Florence area, 327, Becky's Parkway. Those areas will have seen significant growth with water and sewer there, and we have to address those issues.
As I understand it, when you say water quality, it's commonly been referred to as the brown water?
That is correct.
Okay, which is the high rust mineral content, iron content?
High iron, yes. Yes, that's eighty million dollars we're setting aside for high iron. We'll address our plants there, some filtering systems. We'll be making some changes. Also, the way our chemicals are fed into the water system. Those issues will certainly go a long way in addressing that high iron content.
And that's eight million, you said?
Eighty million.
Eighty million, I thought that was right, okay.
Eighty million.
So of this bond, eighty million is going to go towards this water quality to try to do something right away to address that water quality that everybody's been aware of.
That is correct.
Do you have a timeline on kind of when that'll sort of be opportunity to start doing those things?
Well, we're starting now. There are some projects that are ongoing that our staff is using in their budgets, the operating budgets. This bond, we hope to close about October. We are now, we've been working with our engineers, planning all of these projects out. So we should start as soon as we get some funding.
And is it a three-year, five-year, what kind of timeline?
This, certainly it'll be at least five-year project.
Okay, thank you.
And again, that's assuming, there's a lot of assumptions in that. That's assuming weather, that's assuming we don't, we have contract, good pricing, that's assuming we can actually get a lot of our parts and equipments that's needed.
Just, and that's for the benefit of folks at home who like, who think, well, once we pass the bond, that all of a sudden, everything's going to be good by December.
No.
It just takes-
It'll take a while.
A while. And you're looking at at least five years to-
Yes.
Get this in.
We'll have to, some of our wells and pumps, we may have to completely rebuild, so it will take some time.
All right, thank you so much.
Quite well.
Okay, thank you so much. Did we vote on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it. Next, we have Bill Number 2025-27. It's a first reading, an ordinance to grant Lumos Fiber of South Carolina LLC, a franchise to use public right-of-ways within the City of Florence for the purpose of constructing, installing, and maintaining network facility to telecommunication service within and through the city. This item may be discussed in executive session, but we have before us, I'll let Clint, we also have a parent of Ben Brazil, I hope I'm saying that right, to come to speak as well. So Clint, we'll hear from you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is an ordinance to grant a franchise agreement with Lumos Fiber. And what this franchise agreement essentially does is allow for the telecommunications company to construct, install, and maintain infrastructure within our right-of-way, so that, much like all of our other providers, AT&amp;T, all the telecommunications folks, they use our right-of-ways and provide a, we have a franchise agreement with. It should be noted that the Municipal Association, in regards to telecommunication companies, they, they take in the revenue from there and then disperse it amongst all the municipalities that are in, that have a franchise agreement. So we will not see, unlike Duke Energy and some of the other utilities, these are managed, this revenue is managed by the Municipal Association. This concludes staff report.
Any questions? Now, we will have Mr. Ben Brazil.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Administrator Davis, thank you so much for a minute to say hello to you today. I provided you all a letter and packages of all the benefits of fiber. I am Ben Brazil. I reside at 108 Cabot Bay Drive in Chapin, and I am here with Lumos Fiber. I've been in the telecommunications and broadband business in South Carolina for about twenty-five years, with stints at Bell South. Majority of my career was at Spectrum, which was Time Warner Cable prior to that. Some of you may remember that. And for the past few years, I've been with Lumos Fiber, who is now jointly owned by T-Mobile as of three months ago, and I gave you a press release in your package about that as well. We are a fiber optic broadband provider. The difference between that and some of the other telecommunications providers that are in your right-of-way today is that we are pure glass, pure fiber optics. What does that mean? The prior generation of broadband that you probably have in your home today is based on copper. Copper is an inferior medium when it comes to data transfer. We're finally at the last generation, probably the fastest generation medium that we're going to see when it comes to broadband, which is light traveling over a fiber of glass. And we are an end-to-end fiber optic provider. T-Mobile, prior to buying us, had a device that would sit in your living room, and you could get it over the cellular network, which was not fast enough. So they acquired us in a transaction about three months ago. What are the benefits of fiber? It can be up to eighty times faster than your copper infrastructure that you have with your cable modem or some of your telecommunications technologies today. Also, it's going to provide another competitor, which will enhance services and retain price pressure in this market that has traditionally had a lot of competitors. So we have the franchise before you today. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. I look forward to talking with each of you, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak to council today.
Is there any questions? Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms.
Counsel, I see on here it says executive session, but if there's not any discussion, because this is pretty easy, I think we can go on and vote if no one has a question on that.
Is there any legal, was there any legal that went with this, the reason why we had executive session? Is there any legal that we need to be made aware of?
This is pretty straightforward. So, okay, so what say you?
Second.
Okay, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. Next, we have Bill Number 2025-28. It's a first reading, ordinance to declare surplus and organize the conveyance of real estate to the Housing Authority, specifically Florence County Tax Map Parcel 9010-0-06-106
Second.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. These two parcels are located along Oakland Avenue, kind of in the vicinity of Iola Jones Park, kind of on the opposite side of the street. The Housing Authority of Florence has requested the transfer of property to accommodate the construction of a facility that will include a community room, office space, outdoor meeting space, and an outdoor art gallery. I think there was a preliminary plan included in your packet, which is very preliminary in this case. I know there's already possibly been some changes to that. And the facility will assist in the Housing Authority's service to residents and service to community resource. And city staff did review the property, and it is indeed surplus to the city. And this concludes staff.
Point of information. Okay. Councilwoman.
Okay, so we saying this property, these two parcels are surplus?
Yes, that's correct.
Because we just purchased them last year, right? Why did we, why did the City of Florence purchase these two lots?
Thank you, counsel. City purchased these properties. This was abandoned vacant property in the area. It's adjacent to our park in that area, and this is part of some of the cleanup efforts we're doing on Oakland Avenue.
Now, is this the same area where residents previously wanted restrooms?
I don't know.
Because I know residents wanted to acquire some property so they can have public restrooms for the public some years ago.
We have restrooms on Iola Jones Park, I mean, at the park itself.
No, I mean prior to that, for public. Because I mean, the restrooms now is only for people who visit in the center and when the center is open, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And I know it was some talk one time about having restrooms over there for the public to use while they are at the park.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah, I know Ms. Reddy was talking about that. My biggest concern is that we purchased this property last year, and now we're saying it's surplus. Were we not going to do anything with the property when we purchased it?
The property is the house of the former Iola Jones there that the park is named after. When we received, when we got the property, we cleaned that property up and found that the house was in such disrepair that we could not, in good conscience, restore that house, and we didn't have any other plans for that. When the Housing Authority presented a plan to the city of repurposing that, particularly with the art and with other items that we felt would be conducive to that environment there, we thought that we would bring this forth to council and provide that property for them to redevelop.
Okay. And I want to make sure that we are doing our due diligence, because of course, we know that the executive director is county council along with the mayor's brother.
Correct.
And I don't want us to overlook any implications of nepotism. I want us to make sure we're doing everything that we can, our due diligence, because of course, we know that this relationship creates a perception of favoritism. And I want to make sure council is doing every, all of our due diligence to make sure that we are diligent and very vigilant in making sure that we maintain public trust and transparency when we're doing all of these decisions. So that was the reason for my question.
Councilmember McCall.
Yeah, I will say this, and just for part of clarification as well, this was brought up before councilman, excuse me, executive director Al Bradley was even on as the chairman of the Housing Authority. This was brought up probably 2022 in our community development. And that was just to, to purchase the home and try to do something with it. Now, is it, you know, whether a, I rather something being there than a dilapidated building that has been old and abandoned in a neighborhood forever. So for to have the organization to reach out and try to get it repurposed and have a good, and have a good plan for it, I'm in favor of it. But I just want to clarify that statement. That was brought up way before Councilman Bradley, sorry, Councilman Bradley moved to the Housing Authority.
And then another thing I noticed was there was a playground. So we don't, they're going to build a playground across the street from the park?
No, no.
Okay, because then the plans, they had a playground.
Yeah, and that was-
And a community garden.
Yeah, that was-
So do we know what exactly is going to be done?
Those things are in the making, but it will not be a playground. Let me, let me just make this clear. I met with the community a couple of weeks ago, a couple of months ago, or might have been a month ago, and the City of Florence said that we would purchase property, and we would also relinquish some of our properties because they are abandoned and blighted properties. These properties produce crime. They are safe havens for homeless people. And so not only for housing, I'm hoping housing will do even more to help to buy, to build up our community. We invited churches, we invited community members, and we will relinquish properties if they will build up our community. And so while, while have it, Councilman Bradley is the Housing Authority ED, what better yet that he works to build up our community? I am not at all ashamed of that. I am proud of the fact that we can partner with Housing Authority and the City of Florence, because it's not about relationships, it's about building up our community. And I will strongly move forward in that, strongly move forward in bettering our communities. I will not allow politics or anything like that to get in our way. Our community needs us now. Our community needs us to step up. Our communities need us to rebuild our community. And that's what I am, I am moving forward in doing, and I will continue to move forward in doing. Okay?
And, and that is good, and I also want to-
Okay, I didn't give you the floor.
I wasn't actually finished with my point of information.
Yeah, you've got-
I called a question.
So, question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes?
Nay.
Okay, the ayes have it. We will now move to Bill Number 2025-29, and it's the first reading. And it's an ordinance to annex in Zone RG-2, a lot located at the Pelican Drive, identified as the Florence County Tax Map Number 00522-01-026. What say you?
Second.
All those in favor, okay, there's a discussion. Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. This property is located along Pelican Drive in the vicinity of Lake Oakdale, and city water and sewer services are currently available. The property is proposed to be zoned RG2, which is consistent with the adjacent zoning in this area. There is a proposed development of a single-family detached home on the property, and Planning Commission did vote unanimously eight to zero to recommend the annexation and zoning designation. And this concludes staff report.
Thank you so much, Jerry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it. Bill Number 2025-30, and it's a first reading. This is an ordinance to annex in Zone AC, the two lot located on 2037 and 2111 South Erby Street, identified as Florence County Tax Map Number 00150-01-007 and 00150-01-061. What say you?
Second.
Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. These properties are located along South Erby Street. They are in the vicinity of the Walmart, across the street from Walmart. It's the current site of the Salvation Army thrift store, if you're familiar with that. The proposed zoning is Activity Center, which is a commercial zoning designation. The, the proposed uses there are commercial. We've, we've already received applications for a Scrubbies Car Wash and a Chipotle that would go there, as well as we understand- would go there, as well as we understand that the Salvation Army will be rebuilding a new home store, thrift store in that location. And Planning Commission did vote unanimously six to zero to recommend the annexation and zoning.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it. Next, we have Bill number 2025 dash 31, it's the first reading, an ordinance to annex in Zone NC dash 15. The, the two lots located at 922 and 926, Third Loop Road, identified as Florence County Tax Map number 01511 dash 01 dash 037 and 01511 dash 01 dash 038.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. These properties are located along Third Loop Road, corner of Third Loop and Hallmark. The two parcels currently are in the county, and they will remain the same size. The applicant is proposing to build two single-family homes there. The proposed zoning is NC 15. City water service is available along Third Loop Road. However, sewer service is not available along Third Loop Road, but it is along Hallmark there, so an easement would be required across one of the properties to gain access there, and the developer is aware of this and the expense of, of that. And Planning Commission did vote unanimously eight to zero to recommend the proposed annexation and zoning.
Discussion, Councilman Javale?
Just, you said the developer is aware that the getting sewer to the property is going to be on the cost of the developer, correct?
That's correct.
Any other counsel?
So, traffic study-wise, Third Loop is a, it's a nightmare. I mean, I, I just kind of just want to throw that out there in terms of, has any development plans been approved on that site? And then it's something that we certainly need to be considering when we look at the next penny tax situation coming up, a widening of Third Loop.
That's right. It, it, it would only develop these two parcels as single-family detached homes, so it'll only add two, two driveways there. So I don't think you'll see a significant impact to traffic on Third Loop from the development here. But definitely, if there was a significant development along or off of Third Loop that triggered a traffic study, we would, you know, force that through our development standards.
Yeah, I was just curious if, you know, where Third Loop stands in, in terms of, I guess the last development we did was the townhomes close to, close to Forest Lake Nursery. But i- is there any, and I'm really just asking for future knowledge, is there any indication from the DOT that that corridor is potentially getting to be maxed out for future development?
Not, not to my knowledge. I don't know if Engineering's heard anything or not, but not to my knowledge, we've, we've not heard.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it. Next, we have Bill number 2025 dash three two, first reading, an ordinance to annex in Zone IL, a lot located at Ginny O'Brien Boulevard, a portion of Florence County Tax Map number 00122 dash 01 dash 042.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor. This parcel is located near, along Casewell Drive, or in the vicinity of New Spring Church, actually, along Ginny O'Brien Avenue. As you can see here, the whole parcel is highlighted, but the, the applicant here is just proposing the portion to the north of Ginny O'Brien be annexed and zoned. This is part of a larger development that is coming forward. A few months ago, city council did vote to re, annex and rezone the portion surrounding this to Light Industrial, and this is part of the same project, just another parcel that they are adding, or a portion of this parcel that's going to be purchased and added. Currently, city water service is available, however sewer is not available to this parcel. But the plan is upon annexation and purchase, final purchase of the property, it will be combined with the larger parcel, which would make it available then, once it's contiguous with the, the larger parcel there. And Planning Commission did vote unanimously eight to zero to recommend the zoning designation of Light Industrial.
Thank you so much. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Next, we have Bill number 2025 dash 34, it's the first reading, an ordinance to name a private road located in the front of Florence County Tax Map number 00099 dash 01 dash 212. I skipped something? Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped. Bill number 2025 33, please forgive me. It's the first reading, an ordinance to annex in Zone NC dash 6.3, and a lot located at Westfield Drive, identified as Florence County Tax Map number 00072 dash 01 dash 045.
Thank you, Mayor. This property is located along Westfield Drive. It is in the vicinity of Lucy T. Davis School, and the proposed zoning is NC 6.3. City water and sewer services are currently available, and the proposed use of this property is to develop townhomes at this location. And the Planning Commission did vote unanimously eight to zero to recommend this annexation and zoning designation.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Now, we will have Bill number 2025 dash 34. It's the first reading, an ordinance to name a private road located in the Florence, in the front of Florence County Tax Map number 00099 dash 01 dash 212.
Motion. Second.
All right.
Okay. This is a private road that was developed in the 1990s. It is located behind the Target Store here. It connects Dunbarton with the Mall Ring Road. All of us in here have probably been on this road once before, at least once before, and didn't even know it was private. But it is indeed a private road, and it has never been named. However, you see the parcel north of this, there is a proposed development at that location. So, the E911 dressing system and emergency response necessitate an address, so we required this road to be named. And the owner of the road did propose some names, and they went before Planning Commission, and the recommendation is T. Ed. Byrd Way. And Planning Commission did vote unanimously eight to zero to recommend this name.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it. Next, we move to introduction of resolutions. We will go down to B, item B, Resolution number 2025 dash 23, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a stormwater infrastructure program, subrecipient agreement between the City of Florence and South Carolina Office of Resilience to fund a stormwater infrastructure improvement project that will mitigate the impact of future disasters.
So, motion. Second.
All right. Sir?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council.
This is a resolution to authorize our city manager, Scotty Davis, to execute, which is now our second amendment, to the subrecipient agreement with the Office of Resiliency. The first grant that was awarded back in 2023, near the end of it, it was approximately $2.6 million. Then, in 2024, we were awarded an additional $300,000. And then, once we finished design and bid the project, the, the lowest bid came in around $5.1 million. And in working with the Office of Resilience, they have, gave us the additional funding to, to complete the project. So, we are under contract, we are getting ready to hold our pre-construction meeting, and this will authorize the subrecipient grant to be a total of $5.1 million.
Thank you so much. There's a question, Councilman Javale?
Clans, I understand this is for the Pennsylvania Street Stormwater Infrastructure?
Yes, sir.
Just for everybody's benefit, where is Pennsylvania Street?
Pennsylvania Street, that is located to the northwest of our city center here. So, where our northwest community center. That is what we call the Pennsylvania Street watershed. A lot of that water flows through that area, and then ultimately crosses Lucas Street and heads north to, I believe, the Black River. So, there's, there is historical lack of infrastructure within that community, so this will be placing a whole lot of new infrastructure, allow for a lot of the stormwater issues to be resolved, and address a lot of the issues that we have there.
Just for clarification purposes, conceptually, the drawings on this, this has been ongoing for how long?
This has been ongoing now for about two years. So, took a lot of survey work to begin with. We went through about eight to 10 months of design, and then about 12 months of work with DOT to get permitting, along with some of the easements that we've had to, to, to get. So this area will essentially be from Darlington Street North, from Coates Street over to Harmony Street, pretty much.
And this is the last piece of it, getting the final funding in place?
Yes, yes. So we are, again, we, we've awarded the contract to a general contractor. We will hold the pre-construction meeting the week of the 21st this month, and then they'll hit the ground running.
Well, hallelujah, thank you for your stick-to-itiveness and staying with it to get this done.
And so this now raises, with the original bonding work from the stormwater bond back in 2021, which was $7 million, in addition to that, we've received $14 million of grant funding.
For making a total of $21 million, we've been able to spend on stormwater.
That's correct.
Next, we will have Councilman, what's your name, Smith?
What is the estimated time of completion for this project?
This will be a quick turnaround. So, these, this funding has an obligation to be completed in about a year from now. There is a deadline associated with this. So, in talking with the contractor, we're looking early 2026 that will be completed, to be months ahead of the April deadline.
Okay, so the contract has us set for early of 2026?
Yes, sir.
So we'll be months ahead?
Yes.
All right, all right. All those in, okay.
When does it start?
Uh, now.
It start now?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, the actual construct, they'll have to get materials, or they'll, they'll, they'll be onsite in, in the next few weeks.
But we have crews ready to go?
Yep, that's correct.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it. Next, we have Resolution number 2025 dash 24, and this is a resolution approving the disposition by the Housing Authority of City of Florence of certain of its real estate, real property, and other matters there relating thereto. What say you?
Second.
All right. Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor. The Housing Authority of Florence does need approval from city council to dispose of, exactly 59 real estate properties. The reason for the disposal or sale of these properties include costly home repairs, high vacancy rates, and in, they are located in locations no longer conducive to accomplishing their housing program. And proceeds from the sale of the properties will be used to construct new units in more conducive areas, which will provide affordable housing opportunities. Prior to the sale of these properties, they do need permission from their Board of Commissioners, which they have received, as well as the city council of the City of Florence, and also the HUD, the U.S. Housing and Urban Development, will also have to review this once these permissions are given. And the list of properties is attached as part of your packet as well. And this concludes staff's report.
Any questions?
Any discussion?
It's my understanding that this is a ministerial act on the part of the City of Florence that we're required to do?
That's correct.
Yes, thank you.
All those in favor, oh, Councilman Neesmith?
My, my biggest question or concern is with the 59 families. I definitely want us to consider that. They're right now living in low income, and once the disposal or sale of these properties, what happens to these folks? I know there's a majority of them in my district that are being sold, and I'm thinking about, if that's 49 properties, how many families that are going, and with, we facing this housing shortage as it is. I don't want us to make a rash decision that's going to exacerbate the housing shortage. We right now, those areas are suffering in significant economic challenges. So I would definitely have to say no on this, because I don't want any families being displaced. I don't want. And then, I understand about the costly repairs, but I don't want us to change or switch challenges for another one. I don't want us to trade a challenge for another. I, I think with these homes being in need, underserved, and especially our target areas is a concern, because we don't want families displaced. There's always, already a waiting list for families to get in homes, and I just don't think this is the way to do it. I would definitely like to maybe consider repairs, because I want to think forward, and ensuring that families have a safe, affordable access to housing is my main concern, especially when we're going through this shortage as it is right now. Building new construction leads me to believe, how would that make it now affordable with the high construction costs? So those are my biggest concerns when it comes to the community, because these are our voters, our constituents, so.
Councilman Bradley?
I was just curious, do we know what the occupancy of these units are? I mean, they may, if they're in, if they're in disarray, are they even, are they even being utilized? I don't know, Councilwoman Neesmith, but I just wondered what the occupancy, are they all inhabited, or are they?
We do shortage, I would hope.
We do have Council, Councilman Bradley here to answer some of those questions. Did you have a question? Go on, you want to answer him before he?
Yeah, so my, my question was also, if, so if you're, and I know you mentioned you have to, we talked about this before, regarding the properties, in order for you all to construct more, you have to get rid of some of the other ones, to get newer, more modern homes. But is it possible, even, let's say there's someone that's actually in that home, do they still qualify for some type of housing benefits, just Housing Authority benefits, or once you all sell the property, or give over the property, they can no longer qualify for any of your programs?
Yeah. So, first of all, we won't displace any of, of the people who are in the houses now. We'll have, we'll find another location for them. They won't just be out on the street for all of these properties. They also, we also have a homeownership program, and we're going to give them an opportunity to participate in that, and they'll have a chance, if they qualify, you know, to purchase a home as well. So we're, we're not going to just, you know, just put them out on the street. We're going to work with them.
So, you already have a plan for these?
I recognize, the chair recognized Councilman, Councilwoman Neesmith.
So we already have a logistical plan to, how, with this 59 properties, how many families is it?
It's seven, seven are vacant right now.
Seven of the 59 properties are vacant. So 52 of them folks are living in.
Right.
And so what is the, because I, I remember the Housing Authority plan when, when Creekside over there, and, and people had to go in hotels. Is this the same scenario, or is there additional houses that you guys have that you want to place them in?
So we have, we have a number of different options. We have, we can convert their, give them a voucher, so that they can go out and get housing that way. We can find them housing within our public housing portfolio as well. But no, no one will go into a hotel.
So with the housing vouchers, they would have to find their own property and then accept, or hope that the landlord would accept the housing vouchers, is that what it is? They would have to go out and? They would have to go out and?
Yeah, once they get a voucher, they have to, yeah, go out and find.
They would have to go out and find their own property, and we already have a shortage of housing. I think that's my main concern. We do already have a shortage of affordable housing. So, to have people out in the market looking for something that they could afford, because under Housing Authority, of course, I'm sure they paying less than they would if they was to go out with a housing voucher. And that's my biggest concern.
With public housing, of course, yeah, it's set at like 30% of the income. But we, we'll, we won't, you know, we'll, we'll work with every one of them to make sure that it's a comfortable, you know, transition. And we, that's just one of the options. The other option is for us to, you know, as vacancies come, come available, they can go into public housing. But this is a process with HUD. We, we're going to have a number of resident meetings that we, that we have to have before we submit to HUD. We need y'all's, y'all's approval really strengthens our, our, our proposal when we submit to HUD, that we got the city on board. We have, we have, the problem is, we have, basically throughout the Housing Authority portfolio, everything was built in the 1970s. So, so we're 50 years old. And we're trying to maintain, and we want to get our residents into new housing because we want them to, you know, be satisfied with their living conditions. And the only way to do it is to dispose of the old. And I understand there's some, some things we have to go through, but, you know, we're going to work with, with, with our residents. We're going to make it very pleasant for them, and we're going to do whatever we got to do. We're not going to, they're not going to be displeased with the conditions they're in as a result of this.
And, and I know those conditions will be great, but I'm kind of concerned about the higher, where that puts them when it comes to income-wise. Because with the new modern, I'm pretty sure it's going to be a higher cost for them as well. With the construction cost, it's not going to be a higher cost that we put on to the?
No, 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 no cost increase for them. Just we, we just, we believe they deserve to be in decent housing. And HUD backs us with the funding so that we can get them there. And, you know, that's the direction we want to go in, and we're just, you know, asking for y'all's support.
Is this a normal, is this normally what is done with this type of situation?
Yeah, yeah, there's a, we're just following the process that HUD has in place. And it is in a pretty extensive and detailed process when we disposing of any property. But yeah, everybody who's, you know, everybody has to go through the same process. But I'm, and, and as Ms. Neesmith said, you know, what her concerns have, have been considered, you know, throughout all of the, you know, time that, that everybody's been, you know, addressing the housing issue. But it's going to be a pleasant experience.
Councilman Smith?
So, Councilman Bradley, I understand you have to sell these homes so you can create, I guess, more space to, to build in future for the Florence Housing Authority, right? So, my question would be during the sale of these properties, are you going to encourage those buyers to actually take vouchers so these families won't be displaced?
Yes, um, yeah, that's another thing. We want to, as a part of the agreement to buy, we want, we want to include that in there, that whoever purchases the property, they're not going to just take that property and then, you know, it'd be less space for affordable housing. But they will be committed to working with, taking vouchers and what have you.
So, through HUD and through your contractual agreements, you can actually put stipulations in where they would have to remain in affordable housing and stay on Section 8 home, well, not Section 8, but affordable housing for those residents, right? Can you actually place stipulations on that contract?
Yes.
But you can't make them, right?
Well, if we can put it in the contract, if they want to buy it from us, that they got to.
I want to ask council to less follow the rules. We, the chair recognizes, and we won't just have outbursts. So, please allow me to recognize you. What I am going to do is, okay.
I, I do have a, I have a legal question pertaining to some of this. So, I'll ask that we move this conversation to executive session. So, I make a motion that we move this legal question I have to executive session.
Madam Mayor, it's already listed as an item that's intended for executive session. So, that could be discussed at that time. No, no motion is.
I'm motioning, okay.
Thank you so much. All those, there's no vote needed, so it's already on here. Thank you so much. Okay. Next, we will have reports to councils. The appointments of boards and commission will go into executive session. Now, we will have city managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. As you know, all elected officials have a responsibility to make sure that the city operates responsibly, efficiently, and effectively. By participating in the municipal government training, you're gaining the basic knowledge to help fulfill this responsibility. The Municipal Elected Officials Institute of Government provides 20 hours of instruction to elected officials. The first session, Session A of the training includes sessions such as the city as an employer, conducting public meetings, ethics and public accountability, visioning, strategic planning, and goal setting. I'm pleased to announce that Councilman Braddock has completed the coursework and will be graduating from Session A in the annual Municipal Association.
Only took four years.
Four-year degree. Four-year degree.
Somebody twisted my arm. I ain't going to say who it was.
Got to do what I got to do sometimes. Certainly, other members of council have completed this session as well, but we certainly like to congratulate Councilman Braddock. That will be, he'll receive his certificate in July, this week. Secondly, Madam Mayor, members of council, on July 4th, City of Florence celebrated fireworks over Florence. It was a wonderful event despite the weather. We did have a lot of rain, a lot of lightning there. We had to cancel or postpone, excuse me, the event twice because of lightning in the area. With all of that going on, we did have approximately 6,000 people to attend the event. So, certainly, we are looking at that as a wonderful success for the City of Florence. I'd like to certainly mention people that were specifically responsible for this event. Tim Wilson, he's chaired this project. Tim did a fantastic job. He works for Victoria Nash and our Parks Recreation and Tourism. So, certainly, to Victoria and Tim, I certainly thank them and look forward to next year this time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we will have Mayor O'Leary report. I am super excited to announce that Camp Caraway will be this month tomorrow. Next week, next week, next month. Next Monday, yes. This is our, our effort, this was a part of the five-point crime plan that we have in place. And these, this camp is for boys ages from 12 to 18. Those, in those areas, those Catholic area that we really need, that need mentoring. And I'm super excited that this camp will be on next Monday. So, kudos to that, and we will look for even more from, from that. Do we know how many participants?
We're still working on it. Right now, I think we're up to about 12. We want to try to get 15, 16.
Great, great. So, we are, while, you know, there's some concern that we are working on one end to, to make the community safe, we are also working to actually get mentorship and to work with these boys, young boys that need someone to speak into their lives. Also, we, we are continuing our works on making, bringing back community. Community needs to come together, and so I'm super excited of Victoria's work and helping with this. They will have Sounds of the PD, that, that is an effort that we will go around to the different parks with bands and vendors and hopes of our community coming out and, and fellowshipping together. Our first after fireworks show, the next one will be at Timrod Park, August 2nd. And we will have the band Painted Man. And so, we invite you all out to come out and enjoy this great planned event. That will be it from me, from my report. Next, we will have committee reports, Business Development Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, as, due to scheduling conflicts, the Business Development Committee did not formally meet this month, but we look forward to meeting again next month. However, we did receive a report that I'm happy to share regarding Project Urban Square. And the big news is they did the soil remediation. If y'all, anybody was seeing all the dirt being moved back and forth, that is, been completed. And the general contractor anticipates mobilization within 30 days of closing, and they're hoping for a closing date by late July. So, hopefully, by the end of August, we'll see the general contractor in place as the site contractor getting the pad ready in conjunction with the city contractor. So, as well as stormwater drainage activity. So, that's good news to see things coming along. And Clank, is there anything else with regard to that project? That's it, okay. That's our report from the Business Development.
Let church say amen. All right. And the next is the Community Development Committee. Of our, our committee, we did not meet last month. We took off, so we will convene this month. I'm sorry, yeah, this month in July. So, no report. Next, we will have Finance Audit, Audit and Budget Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We met June 25th. Me, myself, Councilman Braddock, and Councilman Smith, we met on June 25th. And we reviewed and discussed Bill Number 2025-25 for Perforation, and also Bill 2025-26. We discussed both of those items in executive session, as well as went over the, the financial overview of the City of Florence and everything. Again, it's looking good. And yeah, that will conclude our report.
Right. You, you lawyers did good today. I am so proud of you. Now, council, we can go into executive session if there. Okay, for, we're going to the executive session for discussion regarding contractual matter as noted on Bill Number 2025-27, 30-40, um, -4-70, to receive legal advice regarding Resolution Number 2025-24 for, for discussion regarding appointments to city boards and commission, and to receive a legal advice regarding our PFAS lawsuit. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposes, we are now into executive, five-minute break. All right. Council, we call this meeting back to order. We've just exited our executive session public, just for information. There was no vote taken in this. We are going to go back to executive session, item Resolution Number 2025-24. But before we vote, I'd like to call up our attorney so that he could make some clarifications for us.
Madam Mayor, would you vote to come out from the executive session?
Yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposes, the ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Ron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With respect to Resolution Number 2025-24, just want to clarify for the council. HUD, which is the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, has a process for housing authorities across this country when it comes to disposition of properties. The intent is to improve the housing stock and to provide quality, affordable housing as housing authorities consider disposition of those properties. And a itemized, detailed plan must be submitted to HUD when any impact for existing residents is involved. No one will be displaced by the proposal that has been set forth by the Housing Authority of Florence. So, we want to assure the council of that and those citizens who might live in some of these impacted areas. This is a multi-step process, and this is really one of the first steps in that process that will require HUD review and approval before it can move forward. But the intent above all else is to be sure, especially, that those current residents are protected and provided for when it comes to any level of relocation or displacement.
Thank you so much. Next, Councilman Javale.
As I understand it, there's a cap on the number of properties that Housing Authority has available. And if they want, as I understand it, if they want to add new properties, they have to somehow get rid of the old properties. Could you explain that process and how that works as far as HUD is concerned?
As it has been made known to me, there's a certain number of units that the Florence Housing Authority has, and it's a different number for every different housing authority, your maximum number of public units. And the distinction between public units and those units that are vouchered units, as you might call them, is that those that are places where voucher recipients live are owned by individuals. Public housing is titled in the name of the public housing authority they own and they operate it, and the rent is limited to a certain percentage based upon the family size. HUD is not allowing public housing authorities to increase that number, or that maximum number of public housing units. So, disposition for many housing authorities is the tool through which they achieve opportunities to create more affordable, as well as better quality, better energy-efficient housing stock.
Newer homes.
Newer homes, newer homes, newer units for persons to live in. So, it provides an opportunity to offload some of the older, harder-to-maintain sites, allowing them to use those proceeds and stay within those caps that HUD has set for them, but to also provide better housing stock in the process of doing so.
And all of this is controlled by HUD?
It is.
I mean, City Forest doesn't really have any say in that whole process, do we?
No, sir. Other than the input sessions, I mean, there's an opportunity for public input, but the carrying out of the activity itself is entirely in the hands of the Housing Authority, and it's subject to HUD's approval. The Housing Authority will submit a plan. HUD will tell the Housing Authority in response that this plan, you know, meets their requirements or is deficient in certain areas that they want to see some additional things approved. But it's, it's more a ministerial act for city council as relates to this approval as city council by resolution establishes the housing authorities in intent to be transparent and public with the process.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Neesmith?
So, basically, you saying I'll have to be concerned about my constituents. They're going to be fine? Is that what you're telling me, Ron?
Your constituents will be fine.
Good. That's what I need to make sure, that nobody's, you know, everybody's going to be fine. And there's a process and a logistical way to do everything for everyone.
The individuals who are residents now will be provided for, will be communicated with. There won't be any last-minute surprises for anyone in this process.
Great. Thank you so much for that.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. One of the reasons that I'm very, very concerned when we, when we move forward in cases like this, when we were, we passed tearing down abandoned properties, politics got involved, and people put out in the atmosphere that we were attempting to take people's properties. Well, it, it caused a problem because then the community, first, lack of trust, and then, second, they didn't come forth with, and, and it held up a process. We, we, we are about building up and moving in process, the process of moving forward. And so, I want to make sure that the community understands that while our council people are very, very concerned with you, and they want to make sure that everything that we vote on does not put our community at harm, I want you to understand that there was great discussion to make sure that this council is not putting our community in any situation where it would not, it would affect them negatively. So, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
All right. Yes, so all, all in favor? Yes, so all, um, all in favor, um, there's always, already a first and a second, so now we would just vote, right?
Yes.
So, all, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it. Next, we will have, um, report appointments and boards and commissions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. We have a number of appointments to boards for expired terms. Uh, first is the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. Uh, this falls to Pro Tem Jabeley and Councilman McKay.
Steve Villaveras.
Uh, is there a first or, um, is there a second?
So move.
All those in favor signify by saying, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it.
Next, we have, uh, Councilman Smith. And finally, we have, uh, Seat Nine is Councilman Braddock.
Uh, I nominate Drew Griffin, I mean Drew Chapman. Yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah, we need Drew. Put him on the board.
Do we have a second?
On the board, yeah, I'm happy with you guys.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it.
Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, we have, uh, two people seeking reappointment. Uh, Councilman to make first nomination is Pro Tem Jabeley, Seat One.
Larry Chuney.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it.
Next, we have Councilman McKay, Seat Five. Then we have Civic Center Commission, uh, falls to Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson. We do have one seeking reappointment and three applicants, Seat Four.
All right, let's, uh, put Ms. Ann Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it.
Next, we have the Design Review Board. We have a number of members seeking appointment, reappointment. Uh, Seat One falls to Councilman McKay. Needs to be a perf- uh, professional structural engineer.
Uh, is Michael Badges still, uh, seeking reappointment?
Yes.
Can I appoint him?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it.
Councilman McCall, uh, professional architect, Seat Four. Uh, Councilman McCall, Seat Two, uh, business, commerce, industry within the downtown Central District. Seat Three, uh, Mayor, Madam Mayor, business, commerce, industry within the downtown district.
Uh, defer.
Seat Five, uh, falls to Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson, a historian.
Um, also my a historian. So, um, defer.
And, uh, Councilman Smith and At Large, Seat Seven is At Large. Construction Maintenance Board of Adjustments and Appeals, uh, Mayor Barnes to make all nominations to this board as prior ordinance. Uh, Seat One is an architect.
Is there any, um, applicants?
No. No ma'am. Uh, we do have, uh, Michael Henry as an engineer would like to be reappointed.
Michael Hemingway, I mean, Michael Heming. Michael who?
Henry.
No, Michael, I'm not going to get rid of you, you got to stay with me. Michael Henry.
Michael Henry.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes?
No other applications. Housing Authority, uh, Seat One, um, goes to Councilman Braddock.
Is there any kind of like special whatevers for that?
No, uh, we do have an incumbent in that.
Okay.
Wondervaring.
Okay, yeah, I nominate Wondervaring. One second.
Seek, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it.
And the next one is the resident commissioner, uh, is appointed by the mayor.
Uh, we, did we have an applicant?
Uh, Angela Lowry.
Uh, Angela Lowry. Do I have a second?
Some second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it.
Parks and Beautification Commission, uh, Seat Number Six, uh, falls to Mayor Pro Tem Jabeley.
Scott Murphy. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it.
Uh, Seat Number Eight falls to Councilman McKay. Veterans Park Committee, uh, all members should be honorably discharged veterans. Uh, Seat Number Five is At Large and that falls to Councilman Mc- McCall.
I think I have, is that, is it Field?
Yes, it is, uh, Donnie Carty's the incumbent.
I gotta say his name, defer. Just say who's Field, that's all.
Resilience and Sustainability Advisory Committee. Uh, Seat Number One, uh, must be a conservation or environmental organization, uh, that falls to Mayor Barnes.
Do we have an applicant?
We do have an incumbent.
Laos Cooper.
Laos, Laos Cooper, yes. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Next, uh, Seat Number Four, must be a representative of District Two and that falls to Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson.
All right, and no, yep, let's reappoint the incumbent.
Leah Woodbury.
Mm-hmm. Well, you ain't got nobody else, right?
Uh, you have Geraldine, uh, no, she's not.
Nope.
That's all.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Ayes have it.
All right, and then we have, uh, Councilman Smith, uh, for Seat Number Nine, Conservation or Environmental Orga- Organization. Finally, we have our Public Safety Citizens Review Board. Uh, must be a city resident and 21 years old. Seat Number Three falls to Councilman Braddock.
Uh, Howard Simmons. Simmons, Simmons.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it.
Seat Number Four, Pro Tem Jabeley.
For what, Public Safety Citizens Review Board?
Correct.
Larry Jackson.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it.
Seat Seven, Councilman McKay.
Uh, is there a, is there a application?
We have...
I defer.
Okay. That completes staff's report.
Oh, praise God. So that concludes our agenda. Um, do I have a motion?
Second.
This meet, oh, congratulation. We would like to, we, I, I wish I would have known, um, our very own Clint Moore has been appointed. We would have, um, allowed him to come up and say a few words or whatever, but the room is clear now.
Face just got red.
The room is clear, so...
It's my big gun.
He is, he has been appointed to the Board of Flore- the Chair of Florence Darlington Technical College Board of Directors, right? Yeah, that's the way you just play it low, but congratulations so much.
Congratulations.
Our very own. So there is, motion to adjourn is accepted. This meeting is adjourned.